What exactly is it?
Litchfield Veterans Association.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the April 3rd, 2024 Litchfield School Board Meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. In terms of review and revision of the agenda, I can say right now the goal is to try to move through our agenda as efficiently as possible while also triaging and putting items up front that we want to deal with earlier. We do have staff that are here that have to travel, and so we really want to be mindful of trying to keep this as a shorter meeting if we can. So with that, in terms of review and revision of the agenda, I'm going to open the floor up to the board to confirm if there are any items they would like to move up and make sure that we discuss tonight, what could be tabled until our next meeting. And I'll ask the superintendent as well.
I'd like to request the board consider moving up community input. Looks like we have community in the audience tonight and give them an opportunity to speak to the board.
Okay.
I'd also like to remove the discussion on the manifest while that is a discussion I do think the board should have. That can be tabled for our next meeting.
Okay. So that can be tabled.
Yep. If it's the will of the board, I can refrain from reading the correspondence and just have it included in the minutes.
What does the board feel about that?
No problem.
That's fine. Sounds great.
All right. So I think we're all in agreement on that. Looks like for our old business, I think a lot of these are going to be brief updates rather than lengthy conversations. There may be some that are longer than others, but did you want us to move up any of that new bit, the old business rather?
No, I think we'll try to keep the, we'll keep it as short as we can.
Okay.
Again, I don't want anybody to feel rushed, but if we can just go as fast as possible.
Absolutely.
And then, under presentations and recognition, so the board and public are aware, I asked Principal Grantham not to come tonight. I said there was no need to be out on a night like this. Her report is there for you to read. If you have questions, let us know. And the same for student rep report. If you have questions, let us know. We'll catch up next meeting.
All right. Great. So then with the board's consensus.
Oh, I got one. I think we need to address the election of officers since it wasn't completed last week.
Yeah. So we will slide that in under our old business, election of officers. And based on the will of the board tonight, we're going to go ahead and jump to Agenda Item H. I will go back and read D or go to DE later. But for now, we'll open the floor up to community input. We would request that public comments be limited to three minutes per person and be made on agenda items for tonight. I would like to welcome anyone from the public who would like to speak to come on up, identify yourself and your address and.
And Madam Chairman, I'd like to waive the agenda item conversation. I think what's being presented tonight may not be on the agenda.
Okay. I honestly have no idea. So.
You're good. Sorry.
Hi. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair. This, I'm Chief Master and retired Bobby Jacques from the Litchfield Veterans. And we want to make a kind of a presentation to you all today. I was a former educator and retired, so I can understand what teachers go through on a daily basis. But, you know, we work pretty closely with the middle school. I don't know if you're familiar with some of the things that we do with them and also the high school. Before we make the presentation, I would just ask if you could go ahead. I talked to Mr. Cutter before. You know, we give out two $1,000 scholarships to seniors, and we don't really get them presented every year. So it's coming up pretty quick, and we've been working with the school. You know, one is going to go to the trades if we have people that there that can apply. And we went back and we talked to the folks at the high school and I said, are we, is it too long? Should we make it shorter, you know? And they said, no, it's fine. So they just got to fill out this two pages to kind of do a couple of questions and that's it. And then we have a board that would sit down and we give them $1,000. They go into military and a couple of people, we give them $1,000. So we want to give $1,000, a thousand, we want to give $2,000.
You're not kids. They want to give $1,000.
So you know, I mean, if I was, you know, had kids in school again, I'd be banging on them again. So to do that. So with that said, so because of our relationship with them, we want to kind of go ahead and, we're going to have on for May, as you see the park, we're going to have that dedication ceremony. And we're working with the middle school for them to sing the anthem, as well as the kids to play the songs, because all those benches have been purchased by a lot of veterans. Some as far as way as Florida are going to come up here for the unveiling. And we're going to have a reception for all the people who supported us, right? So what we want to do, the guys, if they could right now, if they're going to give you a personal invitation to this.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So please don't RSVP tonight here. You can take whoever you want to take with you. I just, my wife will take that or I'll take that when we, when you call it, or you can do it, Litchfield Veterans. And with that said, that's what we were here to go ahead and present to you all to come to our, to our event. So.
Appreciate the personal invite.
Yeah. It'll be a great event. You know, the theme is going to be, what is a veteran all about? I hope I can make you cry when you listen to that. If they don't, then I'm not doing the right thing. The last thing I'd like to do is say, we have a veterans, we have also the 30 Annual Veterans Park. And be nice to see some of you guys go ahead and put your flag up over there. It's only 500 bucks. I'll give it to you. So if you want to go ahead and do that, that'd be fine. It's a 501(c)(3). We'll give you a tax exempt form. We know we're on. We've got a couple of people there playing in the golf tournament.
You don't want to see me playing golf.
What's the, what's the date again?
I'll drive the car.
What's the date again for the tournament?
The tournament is 22 May, but it's all sold out. So it's just.
We're, we're in. So.
There's all kinds of great memorabilia stuff there. We've got all kinds of people coming and stuff like that. So we have 144 golfers.
Somebody needs a designated driver for their golf cart. I promise. I can do a good job.
So if you don't, if you have any questions with us at all, so.
No, I'm looking forward to seeing what's underneath the white of those benches as we've been driving by and we see that they're, they're there and they're ready to go. And it'll be wonderful.
So the benches, the benches were, we went through several different vendors around here to go ahead and get this done. And we end up buying them out of Peterborough. Just a little history, the guy who, when I sat down, you know, when you buy something, as you guys do all kinds of things here, you kind of get that feel. But, you know, Peterborough is not an easy drive, especially in the wintertime. So we went out there several times and the great, great, their great, great grandfather was, was one of the people that did the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in Washington DC. So really a lot of history. In fact, the people are so, so great that when we put the benches in, he came out the next day with his grandkids and everything.
That's wonderful.
Let me tell you a quick story about the benches if I could. You know, I think all of us can attest to that, especially, it's like our home. You know, it's like you kind of bring this in together because now you have veterans that now have places that can say that they're own. And we all talk about all kinds of stories about our time in the military that we really don't, you don't know that till you actually sit on these benches. I think it just comes out, you know? So one day I went over there, because I think we went over, every one of us go over there about three times a day as we start building the park. And there was two little kids, three little kids, and the grandfather was there, found out. And the little girl said to me, you know, said, hey, are you a veteran? I said, I am. She said, well, come over here with me. So she's only seven, so I went with her, you know, she kind of controlled the whole narrative. And she sat on the bench, the Marine Corps bench. And she said, you know, my grandfather was in the Marines. I said, oh? And every time we come here, he tells us a Marine Corps story. So that's how deep it goes back.
I love that.
So, great thing. So, so your kids do great stuff. And I know that, you know, it's, it's a different thing when you're a teacher. You're trying to, the big thing, you can teach, but the big thing is trying to get in everybody's head, especially when you're there. And it doesn't, it's not easy. So, and you don't have an easy job. So I applaud everybody. And we thank you for doing the things you do and hope to see you on the 4th of May.
Thanks, Judith. Thanks for everything you do for our students.
Right back out to.
Thank you.
Thank you. So sweet. Okay, back in. Any other public comment for tonight? Yep. Hello, Mr. Blinis. How are you?
I'm well. How are you folks?
I'm good. Can you still identify yourself for our minute taker?
I sure can. Ronald Blinis, 15 Riverview Circle. And I'll be brief. I just wanted to have a chance to speak. The IFIC meeting that was scheduled was canceled. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to respond to some of the things you brought up last week real quickly. And there are just two that I want to talk about tonight. One of was that I heard mentioned that I think there was a, going to be a move to try to get a state aid thing together quickly for an application, I guess. Is that what I call it? Is that right? Okay. One thing I just wanted to highlight, and I've been doing a lot of research and documents and stuff, and I, I ran into, and you probably know this, but if you don't, there was correspondence between the board and the DOE previously, and which it was noted that two things. They would give money to rehab of GMS. And also that the rehab of classrooms didn't have to meet 900 square feet, provided we limited student size to, I think it was 36 square feet. So that was news to me. And I think the reason I bring it up is if you're going to put together an application, it needs to be kind of broad enough to maybe cover all the opportunities. And I just, I wanted to bring those two things in there. And then the last thing that was in that same correspondence was that there was discussion that we had to do something with a humidity problem before they would be willing to give us money. So that's something that was in that conversation, but it did highlight that giving money to the existing school or rehabbing it was not off the table. The second item, which I want to talk about quickly, is there was discussion about trying to find out why the school failed. And one of the things that I just wanted to highlight is I, you may have seen it, is we all, I did anyway, many of us filled out the economic development forms. And if you haven't seen it, they just went over that last week. And I thought that really was an excellent way to get information. And I think that I wanted to recommend that we maybe use that as our pattern. I know there was a discussion about maybe hiring a firm to do focus groups, but I really would just recommend that we, if we go that route, include a form, whether we do it online, or I think they did a combination of online and, and inputting people that did it up ahead. And I think the results of that, A, too, were a lot of people responded to it, which was excellent. And I thought they get a lot of really good feedback. So I know that's what we're trying to get a handle on. That's the big question. I just wanted to highlight from my point of view, my reaction to that. So that was the two things I just want to talk about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to share that out to everybody.
Oh, great.
So, was it was 1,100 or people responded?
Yeah.
167 people signed up to be part of a focus group that provided their emails.
It's a very big focus group.
Yeah. I think it's going to have to be many groups.
Yes.
I think that makes sense. All right. Is there any other community input for tonight? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close community input at this time. Thank you for everyone who gave us input. And there will be a second community input towards the end of the agenda. Moving back to our consent agenda for committee reports from the board, are there any committee reports that the board would like to highlight or move down to be discussed under old business?
We have budget committee coming up anyways with the budget committee calendar.
We do.
So otherwise, my update is attached to the consent agenda.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other committee? No? Okay. And then for the summary of non-public actions from March 20th, 2024, Ms. Harrison made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of February 21st. Ms. Ames seconded the motion. The motion passed 301. And then Ms. Ames made a motion to authorize continued contracted services for a GMS student for the rest of the year. Ms. Harrison seconded the motion and the motion passed 500. As we indicated earlier in the evening, we have our LMS report, which the public is certainly free to click on and determine what's going on from Principal Grantham, what's happening at LMS. But she will not be here tonight. And then we told our student reps not to come tonight either. So their report is also on here as well. And so therefore, with that, we move into, and we've decided to simply have correspondence attached to the minutes rather than reading it out loud to save time tonight as well. We will then move into general business, and that leads us to the superintendent's report.
So very quickly, the enrollment report is attached, and it's pretty unremarkable. Our enrollment continues to stay steady. And for board awareness, this is the first time that Renee has been tasked with accumulating that data. And she did a great job knowing, figuring out where to pull this stuff and to get it all on there. So thank you, Renee, for getting that pulled together. The retirement T notice has gone out to the board. That is the board's retirement T, where you host our retirees and our faculty on Thursday, May 23rd, from 3:30 to 5:00. I think it'll be at the high school. That tends to be the location. If it's a nice day, we may try to go outside again. It actually is a very nice setting out on the lawn. So that is scheduled, and we do have a few retirees to recognize this year. And the Hudson School Board discussion, so basically, it was Principal Hess, Ms. Harrison, and Ms. Ames, and myself who went to the Hudson School Board meeting on Monday. They very clearly stated for the public that this was something they initiated, and that they really wanted to just open a dialogue to what possibilities there are to increase collaboration. And so I would just highlight for the board that I have found the relationship with Hudson to be incredibly collaborative. Both Superintendent Russell and now Superintendent Mullis have reached out when there have been needs. We were collaborating on a couple of initiatives. The pandemic sort of put a stall in that. However, there have been instances where Hudson has needed things from Litchfield, and we've been very accommodating on those requests that have come from them. And when we have needed things from Hudson, they have been very accommodating to us on that, too. So it really was just an effort to open the door and to continue that collaboration. So going forward, I think it was a positive conversation, and I would welcome us to continue that pathway of collaboration with our neighbor. The, you know, the conversation that I've had with a few people afterwards is that we have some under-enrolled classes at the high school. We'd love to have some Hudson students joining us. You know, if there's a way to help our classes by having students who are unable to fit courses in at Alveron to come here, we're wide open to those dialogues and conversation. And obviously, if there's a need on our side, we're wide open to opening that door, too. So I don't know, Heidi or Tina, you have something you want to add about that conversation?
No, I think it, I think it actually turned out to be a really positive thing. I will say that we were initially surprised that it was on the agenda. We did not know until the agenda was public. And so it was initially surprising. However, the conversations that happened after that were so fantastic and really collaborative. And again, I walked away from, it was very interesting to attend another district's school board meeting. So I, it was, that was interesting to watch. And there are different dynamics than ours. But walked away thinking, there is room for collaboration. We've talked about AP classes, particularly in that we want to be able to offer a variety here. And maybe we take a few Hudson students here to fill up some of our AP classes and gain higher enrollment for that. And likewise, we could offset with other, our AP students who may want access to a course that we don't offer. And so there does seem to be some room for collaboration. Some feedback I've gotten is there might need to be some conversation regarding scheduling because I'm not sure our time's aligned in terms of periods. And so when someone has to go for, currently we have two students enrolled for AP chemistry, they have to, it runs into a different block for this schedule. So thankfully, they have a study hall. So I think we just need to talk about some scheduling components to it. But again, I think it's a great conversation to have. In terms of the piece, I think that I saw online regarding if it was a possibility for students, all of our students to transfer to Campbell. That was, in my opinion, that is a very premature conversation. I think it's going to be one of the options that are examined as part of our facilities committee. It's certainly going to be an option examined. And we don't even know if the community would want that. I've heard for many that would not, and I've heard for some that would like us to consider it. So it's just a premature conversation to have right now. We absolutely, I guess, we sent an email out because we wanted to make sure our staff knew that Campbell High School will be open next year. And we look forward and we love them and we want them to stay with us. And so I think, again, this, this turned into a really big positive for us. And so I'd like to, you know, really thank the Hudson School Board for opening the door to that conversation. Their chair is fantastic and has offered to sit down and collaborate with anyone on the board that wants to collaborate. So I, I think it would be good to kind of get different perspectives from other boards. So that was sort of what I took from it. I don't know about you, something different, but.
No, I thought it was great. And it was interesting to see how another board operates. They operate very similarly to how we work. There was a lengthy presentation about their, their middle school unified arts program and the opportunities that they afford their students there. And I, it was interesting to see and kind of gratifying to see that we are able to offer just as many, you know, the, the standards and competencies and the concepts that we offer our students are very similar, even though we're a much smaller school. So yeah, I thought it was great. The board members and the superintendent were very friendly and, yeah, and look forward to more opportunities for our kids.
And then one last item for me is, I'm not getting soft in my waning days here, but I've already canceled school for tomorrow. So if you look at the forecast, 50 mile an hour winds with heavy wet snow in the tree limbs. And just having lived three days without electricity at home, we were hit pretty bad in the last storm under similar conditions. So, you know, my, my hunch is there will be a high probability that we'll be without power tomorrow in parts of town. And certainly, certainly some of our staff will not have it where they are. So not even going to try to get a remote day in that turns into a disaster because people drop offline. We're just going to have a, and I can't even call it a good old fashioned snow day. It's a, it's a yuck day. And I just want people to be safe and to hunker down and to do some family things and make the best of it. So school is off, offices are closed. Our staff will be working remotely if they're poss, if they're able to do that. We'll wait and see how it unfolds.
Quick question. And so I was texted earlier. Does this affect the last day of school and/or graduation?
So it doesn't impact graduation because that's already been announced. And the, the last day of school is bumped back to Friday, the 14th. This could be the last snow day you ever call because I don't think it snows on the Cape. You never know.
You'll have flood days.
They used to.
They have, they have flood days, though.
That's true.
So a different beast.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none. We'll move into our business and operations. It is the first meeting of the month, so we get an update. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Totten.
Yeah. So a quick update is just a continuation of just the challenges that we have seen this year in regards to staffing. That's mainly been paraprofessionals as well as custodial staff. So a little while back, we worked with the union to bring in a team of people to help clean the upstairs of the high school. That has gone well. We continue to not be able to hire people. And now with our, one of our custodial people going out to grounds, which makes sense. We've got sports starting up. We had even more of a need present itself. So working, connecting with the school board, I appreciate that we're moving forward with the middle school. So my request tonight would be that a formal vote, and it would be to authorize a transfer in the amount of 11,500 from the LMS custodial salaries to the LMS custodial professional services. So this would be to get an area of LMS cleaned, which would then leave the rest of the school for our nighttime lead. So all of LMS is getting cleaned every night, each day that there are students there. So the contract is only through the end of the, the school year, because again, we're working with the union and we're hoping that with the passage, and thank you town for that, of the salaries for the support staff, that we'll be able to hopefully hire some of our own back again at that point, too.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to transfer $11,500 between the salaries line to.
Professional services.
Professional services line.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Passes 500.
Mr. Totten, thank you for the email and alerting the board to this issue over the course of last week. We appreciate the diligence and you staying on top of that.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great. And next on our agenda is public minutes. From March 20th, 2024, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the public minutes.
Second?
Yep. Any questions or comments or changes? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes from March 20th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same? Passes 500. Sliding over into new business, we have the budget committee timeline.
Sure. I can cover, just get this teed up here a bit. So the budget committee had their first meeting post the March elections last week. They did present a draft, and I highlight the word draft, budget committee meeting calendar. They are intending to hopefully vote on their committee meeting schedule at their next meeting, which will be April 25th. Hold that thought for a minute on April 25th. We would like to get to a position where there's less volatility in the schedule, notably towards the end of the year, as much as humanly possible. We all recognize that things can change, as we've learned this past year and in prior years. But really, you know, I think the commitment from the board, and as I expressed, is we really want to be in a position where this is as solid as we possibly can get and as we know of at this point in time. So the dates are really for awareness. I did bump up the dates to our school calendars, which I know is also on our agenda and other meeting dates. I didn't see that there were any particular conflicts or any days that are out of school with this calendar that we need to be thinking through. But that was just, that was my, that was my read on it. So I think, Mr. Totten, the one thing that, you know, we talked about last year and is consistent with what's on this schedule this year is the October 29th estimated delivery date of the school budget to the budget committee. I mean, that is continuously a bit earlier, but just aligned to schedules. So I just ask for your validation that that in fact is, is doable, at least from where you sit today.
Yep, that is doable. I do have a comment on one of the dates there.
Okay.
So for me, I think it's important for multiple parties to have the right amount of time to look at, at the budget. So you start with school and, and directors and superintendent. So that's one group. Then you have the school board, another group, budget committee, another group, and then the town being the last group because they're the ones that are voting on it. So for me, when I look at this, I know that the school and the directors have a decent amount of time. I know that the town will have a decent amount of time. And the budget committee, and I don't see, I could see a little bit more time going for the school board. And I, as I look at that, that November 14th date, to me, seems like if the school board and the budget committee are looking for the joint presentations on November 7th and 12th, and then it goes back to the budget committee on the 14th, that doesn't give the school board time to kind of digest it and then make decisions after that. So that would be my one recommendation is to, to advocate for more time for the school board, which would then bump, I believe if you advocate, would bump that 14th back by a little bit.
I think, yeah, we could even keep the 21st.
Well, so that's a school budget review if needed by the budget committee, right? So there is a buffer in there to allow an additional week if we take that if needed to be a.
Yeah, but if we set it now, weren't we saying we want it to be as solid as possible before we?
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying. I think, Mr. Totten, you're right. There is, there is a week flexibility in there.
So looking at the calendar, it looks like our board meeting would be on the 20th, which would be the night before the meeting on the 21st, which would give us a week from the presentations, the joint presentations to digest, have discussions amongst the board, and then make motions for any cuts or changes, increases, whatever it may be.
I think the challenge, though, is we didn't get through it all in one session last year.
I think we're going to have to. I mean, it's certainly better than having it go to the budget committee on the 14th before we've even had a chance to meet again.
I don't know that it impacts this, the budget committee's schedule, but maybe there's an opportunity, if needed, to consider two meeting dates that week by the school board.
What do you, I'm sorry. Say that again?
So if we're meeting the week, if we're meeting on November 20th, I don't have that counter for me, right? November 20th.
Yeah.
Maybe there's an opportunity to meet twice that week as a school board, specifically for budget voting.
So the prob, I'm, we're already meeting the 7th and the 12th to do the joint reviews.
But we're not making motions at those meetings.
Correct. So to add a fourth meeting into that two week span is.
Could we make mo, well, it's too much information on those meetings to make motions on those meetings, right?
Usually we're digesting it. I mean, it's, we can. I mean, I think there has been.
I think we just reserve that right, right? Or at least hold that thought for now. I know that when I went through the budget with the, with the board last October, November, it was a lot for one night, and we needed multiple meetings to get through it. And I would probably anticipate the same, especially with the new superintendent coming in.
The other question I have is, this is an LSSA negotiating year. What, do we know the time? Like, I don't know how early we find out when those things are.
So past negotiations have been very efficient. We were done in September.
Okay.
So it's, it's a different timeline than what LEA presents.
Because I know that that was something that we, that kind of held us up this last time. And that was one of my questions is how do we make sure we have a schedule that works that we can stick to?
So I guess, sort of going back and summing it up, I think the November 14th, I think either way, whether we have one or two meetings as a school board, is not going to be feasible for us to have handed off our budget to. Either way, whether we have one or two meetings as a school board is not gonna be feasible for us to have handed off our budget to the budget committee. So if we. Provide feedback to the budget committee that the November fourteenth date, um, probably is not going to hap-. I, I can't see a way that it is gonna happen on November fourteenth. We can add additional board meetings, maybe the twentieth and the twenty first or whatever you got. You know, the board decides to do, um, to have that additional time. But I think the soonest the budget committee would have it to start. Doing their review separately than the joint review would be the twenty first. So I just wanna make.
Is it possible? I, I don't know, cause I mean, this is, I kind of came in like in the middle of it last time. Is it possible to start the whole, well, I guess that they have the town stuff, but like hypothetically speaking, like if they were agreeable to at the budget committee, could we move up? By a week into October to start our process?
So the, October twenty ninth is already cutting it incredibly tight for Mr. Totten and for the school and the superintendent to go through there. I mean, that is, I'm sure the budget committee would love to have it earlier in October. It's just not.
It's, a lot of it has to do with the school and as they, as principals and, and teachers welcome in students. That really should be the goal at the beginning. And some schools do bump it up, but then as they're welcoming students, they're focusing on budget at the same time. And for me, it seems like. Focus on the kids first, get them in and then, I mean, our, our principals really start working on it pretty soon right after that as well. And they're thinking about it. During the summer too, but they meet with their teachers. So focus on the kids first. Then allow the, the principals to meet with the teachers and then kind of progress from there, which really does get us to the twenty ninth. So that's kind of one, one of the purposes of why we're.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just two other things that are kind of, I think, driving some of this. So Tuesday, uh, the twenty ninth is a Tuesday. You could have a meeting on Thursday, except it's Halloween. So that kind of puts a wrinkle into why we're not immediately getting into it. And then the following Tuesday is election day. And this election day is a big election day. So that's not a date. So those two events are causing a block in your calendar. You know, a possible thing is if you then get after it on the, um, on the seventh and the twelfth, you could have the fourteenth for your meeting. You know, to, um, and, and have the twentieth as your backup meeting if you need it. So a suggestion to the budget committee may be, let's do a third joint session where we're gonna then start doing our stuff. You're welcome to come and watch us do that. Um, but then, you know, I, I really felt like there was an extra week this year that we didn't need, other than we were on hold pending the negotiations, right? That was out of our control. Um, but we had the budget relatively wrapped up because this process is working pretty well with the budget committee jointly. Collaborating and watching it unfold. So they're not hearing for the first time. They're pretty familiar with all the discussions. So the fourteenth might be a way to do that. Uh, and to speed it up.
And if I remember correctly, you know, there are still some numbers that are hanging out there by the, I don't know that we knew our health insurance.
Insurance is always out there.
Yeah, there's a few other items that are gonna be, we have to understand are gonna be placeholders until we have some more final numbers. Yeah, okay. Alright, so I guess in terms of us giving feedback to budget committee, I think the meeting on the fourteenth might be better either as a, as. Dr. Judd suggested a joint budget, they can attend with us, um, or that could be a school board meeting to be able to start.
I think as the board sees, I added a comment, this is the live version for the budget committee that I think they see as well. So. Kind of put chairman's on, on that. Um, on April twenty fifth, they, the budget committee will be meeting that is a school vacation week, okay? Um, I will not be in town for that meeting and I don't think you will either. My question to Mr. Plansky, Mr. Schumaker, Ms. Harrison, is there availability in your schedules during that school vacation week to attend?
I, I think I can probably go. I don't think we have anything that week.
Alright, thank you for that coverage. Appreciate it.
Andrew, one other is, uh, so I updated the board calendar when you look at it, so that the deliberative session holds are now on. The eighth and the fifteenth. So this says the seventh and fourteenth, but I think it was looking, those are Friday nights unless.
Those are, he was looking at the twenty, that last year's calendar.
Great. I think we have some. I think we have some feedback that we pass along, which is good. Uh, anything else on that timeline that anyone wants to add? Hearing nothing, we will move into old business. Um, so there's an update on the zoning matter.
Yep, so we have a letter forthcoming on, uh, from our attorneys. So. We talked about strategy of how to, how to frame that. They're, um, they're gonna author a letter to you, to the board. Um, outlining, uh, the rationale, uh, around the five points. And then it'll be for us to do what we wish with it, right? So we can bring it to a meeting or whatever. But that is forthcoming.
Any questions from the board on that zoning matter? Moving into the calendar, twenty four, twenty five, school district calendar.
So after our last discussion, I just wanna point out to the board, kind of on the fly, we, um, we moved. Into January on the second and the third, two workshop days. Um, and so that means families will have a two week vacation. Staff will come back on Thursday, Friday after New Year's to complete professional development. Um, I then had to go back through and reconcile and make sure I had all the right days and all the months reconciled out. Uh, there is a typo on this and it is that, um, I didn't put in the margin next to January that the second and third are workshop days. So I'll add that in. So when you approve it, the yellow is workshop, we'll put that on the sidebar. And sorry, I got that text this morning and forgot to add it before this meeting. Um, and the other thing I, I wanted to point out to the board is based on feedback from the principals. Um, we swapped the September and the March workshop days. So the September day will be the remote day for the high school, but a full day for everybody else. Okay, so the New Hampshire primary on September tenth. The high school students will be remote, um, but everybody else will be in session. The elementary, the feedback from the elementaries was they wanted to get their rhythm established and not have another workshop day because they. It was like a four day week, a four day week and another four day week. So, um, and then it also gives us a PD day in March. So instead of being done in January, we have one more PD opportunity in the spring. Seemed like a really reasonable compromise to make it all work. So. This is what we have and I, I've reflected all the feedback I've received in this.
There was a concern, or at least a discussion point at our last meeting about the, uh, January second and January third. Because some of our neighboring towns are open where our kids attend classes. How does that impact them?
So, uh, if the regional centers, um, they'll have classes and our students would be welcome to go, but we would not be providing transportation. Or, um. You know, so that, or they would miss it and there would be absences. We are required to have no fewer than. I wanna say five instances of anomalies. So we're still okay in the grand scheme relative to the law with our regional centers.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board on the calendar?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the Lishfield School District twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five calendar.
Second.
With the amendment to January as discussed.
Yes, with the amendment as discussed.
Right now.
I can see the green box typing as we speak. Um, no other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. School calendar passes five zero zero, which from what I can see on Facebook, families are looking forward to receiving to make their plans for their vacations next year. So.
They're gonna have a free day tomorrow to do it.
Yeah, and a firm start date for school is helpful. I know a lot of parents have been asking when school's starting, so. I'm happy to be able to have a firm calendar for them. LMS solar project update.
Shifting, so we, Doug and I had a meeting with Kay on Monday. And I don't know where I put my notes for that, so bear with me. So the, the timeline is, we understand it right now is that the, um, the. Grid is, is down on the roof. You saw photographs of it. That's relatively finalized. They are in the process of putting the cinder block ballast on it to hold everything down. They did it today before the wind tomorrow.
They were up there doing it. They had a crane and there was, yes.
Uh, so the next process is to install what are called combiners. So basically when they wire all the, uh, solar panels together, they come to a combiner box. And that's what combines the power that is being generated. So the combiners are supposed to be put in next week. Um, and then the panels are scheduled to be installed the week after. Um, and then. The combiner box down in the electrical room is scheduled the week after that, which is the break week. Um, and then there's about a week's worth of wiring that needs to take place in the electrical room. So. At this point, um, once all of that is done, we have to wait for the town to complete their inspection to certify that everything was done according to the design. Um, we still, or they still are waiting for Eversource to get back to them on the interconnection permit. Um, that has been months in, in the process. So, um, and Eversource. Uh, takes their time and does their due diligence, but that is a step that we have not yet been able to do. So. That's where we are currently with, um, with the solar project. So. In the meeting, we also had a conversation with Kay about reconciling against the PPA. So remember the PPA is in effect. So Doug created a spreadsheet showing how much electricity we abused and spent against the PPA. Um, and for the most part, we're owed money back against that. So at this point in time. Um, we are owed eighty two thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. And that's in part, some of the. Parts that they brought in last year that they continue, we've carried that as a, as a debt for, for them. Um, and then the power difference. And remember, um, it's upside down in winter. So we're using more electricity in the winter. It'll, it's, it's already leveling back off now as we come into spring. So, um, but we've had that dialogue and. Are, um, anticipating that we'll get that reconciled this year.
Is that money that, um, we're able to park and offset the balloon payment with?
So a decent amount of that money will, will go to offset what we paid towards Eversource. So about half of that money will go towards offsetting what we paid towards Eversource. The other part will go towards, um, just the, the finishing work that has happened at LMS for, for phase two. Because again, we paid twenty five thousand for electrical work, uh, that was needed for solar, um, but it's gonna be ultimately paid by Dynamic Grid. So we need to then offset that again. So there, there's not really much that, that would be left over to.
I guess I understand that. I, I just think that for Eversource, we've already paid those utility bills, right? So this is just reimbursing us for money already spent?
We paid those utility bills knowing that we're only gonna pay about ninety six thousand. For, for the year towards the PPA or towards Eversource in a way for, for energy. So, um, it's gonna be over ninety six thousand because again, the solar wasn't working. Um, therefore, everything is just drawing the electricity from the grid. So if we, if we held on to that eighty thousand. Um, that is owed to us, then we're gonna owe over what we budgeted for, for energy for the middle school.
So we know, so our, our panels, we, we found our panels. Cause there was like a question as to whether it was in one warehouse or.
So, so the panels were in the warehouse.
They were.
Yeah, we just verified that they're there. In the US and are ready to ship. But they didn't, because that's an expensive component, they did not want those on pallets in the backyard. So they're waiting until the racking was done. And then they'll arrive and be lifted up onto the roof.
How are they doing with, I know there was some issues with the heating over there. It, did they figure that out? Cause they came in and were.
Yeah, so we actually had an HVAC meeting today to do a follow up on exactly where we are. So our understanding, as of today, that everything is up and operating. The compressors have been replaced, um, all of the work's been done and Jen reported that, you know, the. Temperatures have restored back to kind of level where, where we need them to be. So at this point in time, uh, we're completing the, um. The commissioning. So, you know, they're rebalancing, making sure that everything is operating as, as it's designed to. So. We believe right now that we're right where we need to be.
So a question on the co- the combiner box and the wiring, are they gonna be done in the same week or is that another week? I'm just trying to count out the weeks as to.
My notes from the conversation were combiners, week of four, eight, then the panels, the week of four fifteen. And then combiner box, which is the big combiner. So you have combiners on the roof and then a big master combiner down in the electrical room, right? That's how I understood it. And that's the week of four twenty two. And then there will be, uh, a week's worth of additional wiring. So we're really into the end of April with this.
And we're waiting on Eversource. The town and then Eversource to do their thing.
To interconnect it. And did you, does that prevent, I can't remember if that prevents hooking it up or is that?
Prevent. I believe it prevents hooking it up. Yeah, so the town is waiting for us to complete the work and then they come back for their post inspection in a way. So. Um, and at the same time, we're still waiting for the interconnection authorization from Eversource.
So I think it'll all be set with a switch that can't be thrown until Eversource and the town give the thumbs up.
So we're probably looking the middle part of May, best case.
Best case. And I'm going, at this point, um, I'm gonna try to reach out to Eversource directly and say. Can we, you know, where are we with this and how do we move this along? You're welcome.
Any other questions on solar or LMS? Hearing none, we'll, um, go back to our facilities committee structure, um, committee membership and, um, facilitator. Um, I just peeked at the survey results. We have eleven people in town so far that have signed up to be involved with the committee. Um, so I will share those names and information with Matt and Andrew.
Actually, I can see it all.
Oh, perfect. I made you guys editors, so I'm hoping you guys can see it. So we can get going. It does look like there's a fair amount of people that can meet earlier, which is nice. Um, it might be able to combine with, um, some, a better schedule for some of our administrators. So. I'll leave it to you guys to figure that out. Um.
So I, I did wanna just quickly talk about that, um, Andrew, I don't know what your thoughts are on this, but. Given the amount of community interest, we had talked about maybe having like a, like a sort of two part to this. Which I think may be worth revisiting. Um, because also I do wanna like, I do wanna make it so that way people who wanna participate that can't come during work hours can, can make it. Um, while also being cognizant of our administrators who are, you know, staff that are on the committee, just making them go home and come back is, is tough. Um, given them, I think we have more bandwidth if we also have a community segment of this, which can also have crossover from the rest of the. Committee if they want to attend or.
Yeah.
Whatever. Um, I just don't know your thoughts on that, but I think that that might be a good compromise of, instead of just telling all the staff, hey, guess what? You have another nighttime meeting.
I mean, I guess the way I see it is, I mean, so out of the eleven, five has responded, you know, three, three thirty, three thirty actually works for them. As the earliest possible time, which is a good number, right? I don't know, maybe if we look at four PM, we get another couple of people, right? Just to make it as accommodating. But I think once we land on that, I think we can just, we have everybody's email. We can email them out, BCC, right? Hey, this is the start time, just reconfirming this works for you.
Yeah, the only other question I have is like what the size we're gonna look at, what that is. Cause ultimately if we have eleven people, we already have what, seven or? Seven on that committee. So just what's a manageable size for us to manage a meeting that's, you know?
Yeah, I would think probably twenties are max for everyone, right? I mean, that's a big committee.
That's a big.
Right, but we, we need to, we need to have kind of open doors to this.
Yep.
And get as many perspectives as possible. I think in terms of, um, I know it's not on the agenda specifically, but in terms of like. Next steps for the facility committee, I think really what I'd be looking for is board direction on areas of focus. And maybe that's, hey. We wanna get a postcard out with a QR code that sends everybody in town to a survey and tell us what interests you. Is it sending our kids out? Is it renovating GMS? That way we can take those results and start to really have some data and metrics behind how we wanna proceed as a, as a committee. Just a thought.
I absolutely fully support a survey. I think the only question I had had or that was raised last time was. Would a survey from the school board, would the results be considered reliable or is it? Is, is there a possibility that they wouldn't be considered reliable versus coming from an independent, um, survey? Which again, I don't necessarily wanna pay people to do surveys, but at the same time, there have been. Questions about, you know, do you have a result that you want and therefore ordered the survey in such a way that solicited results that you. Yeah, and I just, that's my only concern is that I don't wanna go to the trouble of, not the trouble, but I don't wanna have the expense of doing a really thorough, thoughtful survey. And then having the results kinda.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be in favor of having someone else help with that. Because the other thing too, like I, I brought this up to Peter at one point with the economic development survey. I, that was a great survey, but the one thing that for me that I thought it lacked was, um, it didn't give people, it gave people an idea of like, well, what do you wanna drive by? Like, or what do you wanna drive by and see? But it didn't, in my opinion, there's not enough base knowledge for people about like, hey, well, what, what do each of these things mean? For tax impact, right? Which I think is the big driver of economic development. Um, and I wanna make sure that if we do something for the school, it's the same thing. Like. We can put out a very broad thing that gives like a million different options, but is there ancillary information that we need to provide with that that's gonna enable people to? That's gonna enable people to help answer in a way that makes sense across the board, not just like in a perfect hypothetical world. Cuz that's quite frankly, what we've, the work we've done on the facilities committee was, we, we landed on a solution that was a very expensive solution, not easily, right?
So I guess the question is like, is there individuals out there that do this line of work and that can support us?
So I, I've been trying to find somebody and I've been successful, um, and we've had a couple of the people who had put in to be the owner of project reps. Who said, hey, we do this kind of work, like, we can help you triage a failed bond vote. And I've thanked them for that offer, but they're, they have a vested interest in, I mean, they were bidding to do a job that now is not available. So I think anything that is suspect of a predetermined outcome, we have to steer clear of, so I'm, I'm literally trying to find somebody so neutral and clean that. You know?
We're gonna have a committee though, that's gonna have community members on it, and so, you know, maybe bringing those options to the community, to the, to the committee to say. Hey, like, welcome new members, you know, what if, here, look at this and here's full disclosure, like, these people bid on these things, but are you comfortable with any of these if we can't find anyone else?
I, I, I think that the committee, I think step one is getting the committee set up and making sure that it represents, and then the first task is. Who will facilitate that group that can do that work? And I think the committee should pick somebody that they say, here's a neutral, here's somebody that we really believe, um, can accomplish this, so. I'll keep working, trying to get somebody, but I, I feel like you've got step one and I'll have suggestions for step two. And if you settle on, hey, yeah, this, this firm has experience with this, that's up to the group to decide that.
The economic development committee, we gathered a bunch of surveys from other towns who have done it.
Yep.
And sort of picked through, I don't know, half a dozen different surveys and picked what we thought were sort of the best questions for Litchfield. And to your point, Matt, when you see the results of the survey, you'll, you can kinda get a feel for what people wanna see.
Right, but again, my point is, I know what I'd like to drive, like, I moved here cuz I love driving by farms, but economically speaking, right? If people stop farming, those are gonna turn into houses, right, and I don't think that people are making the connection.
Yeah.
And if you don't provide information upfront, they're looking, they're saying hypothetically, like, ideally, ideally what they'd like to see. But does that actually align with also what they wanna see on their tax bills, which is, which was the big complaint this year? I, I thought that the survey was great, by the way, I thought you guys did a great job with the survey.
A lot of plagiarism involved in that survey.
It's just borrowing.
So in, in terms of facility and, and, and Sarah, I know you were the facilitator, right, was that a, forgive me for not knowing this. Was that a board directive of you facilitating or was that a committee?
No, that was kind of a, we need a facility, uh, uh, someone to chair the meeting, so.
Okay, so it's not the board, the board members, Mr. Schumaker, right, we don't have to be facilitator of this meeting, we can refer to another individual? Or does it have to be a member of the board?
I think, it is a board committee, so I do, yeah, no, I, I do think that you and Matt should facilitate it.
I, I, I think you have two facilitators personally, that, yes, a board member should be the chair, kinda organizing it. Et cetera, communicating, um, but. That committee had community members on it, it's always had community members on it since I've been here, there was a, you know, we broadcast every meeting on television. And there was still an accusation that it was all to get to a predetermined outcome, and I don't believe that to be the case. I think that committee vetted everything, you can go back and watch a hundred hours worth of meetings if you wish to reach your own conclusion on it. But that's still the claim, you don't wanna repeat that, you don't wanna do all this work and then have it be, well, you picked this and here's what you, you steered it in the following. So I think that facilitator to, somebody who's skilled and can take those tasks on and accomplish that. They own the data, they compile the data, they share the data, they have no vested interest in it, it's truly pure. That's where my vision is on it.
I think maybe we're, we're mixing up the term, the facilitator versus the chair.
Yeah.
Piece of it, so I think for the facilitator, having that neutral person to help facilitate the conversations and surveying is absolutely gonna be key. But in terms of the committee itself and chairing it and running it and agenda prep and whatever is gonna go on there, I think that should be board-led.
Ultimately, Dick, it's also ultimately geared towards giving us directive on, on what we need to do to solve, as a board to solve the problem that we face.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I think that we can certainly get a lot of community input through that committee.
Yeah, exactly, like this, this option last year didn't work, it voted down and here's why and here's what, you know, you need to consider and here's what needs to happen going forward. So I, in terms of setup and how it works, I actually don't have any preconceived notions about what this should look like or not look like, so I. Honestly would put it to you and Matt to have a conversation of what you're picturing it looking like, I mean, I'm certainly happy to have the conversation, but.
When is the next, as of today, when's the next facilities meeting scheduled for?
Second week in April, right?
So next week.
Well, I, I think, let me, it's on, oh, it's on my calendar for the tenth at three thirty.
And so I, let me just do a double check on this, the invite, because that's the former committee.
Yeah.
I am the organizer, I'm the one who sent out the invites and organized all of that. I've canceled the others, waiting for outcomes, so what would you like to do with that meeting on the tenth, cancel it or?
We need to have one at some, we need to have one to get moving.
I think we need to organize, um, I think for those that expressed interest in this survey. We email them out and alert them to next week's meeting as soon as possible, right, so they have as much notice as, as well. I think we keep the time for next week, but be open to changing the time based upon our conversation with the committee. If we need to adjust it thirty minutes or whatever. And then we talk about as a committee, the reaction to the article that failed, I think that's an important discussion as, as a town, committee representation.
Right.
And then ultimately, again, I get back to the point where that committee's gonna need board directive on where to focus. And I think this has to be a standing agenda item now for the next least few meetings until we get fully operational again and up and running.
No objection. The only other piece I wanna make, just throw out there is, I was, when I wrote the narrative, I was pretty clear that. If interest exceeds spots available, that additional focus groups may be created so that no volunteer input is turned away. So that is an option as you are planning this, if you decide eleven or, again, this has only been out since, what, yesterday? So there could be even more in the next day or two, if you decide that number is too much, I do think just putting it out there, some focus groups for some people. And then, um, we have some background on there for you guys to.
Yeah, that's why I'm, if we end up with enough, like, I think that having a community arm that also could meet at a different time. And could come together at various points might be useful.
Yeah, I, I know from, just for other boards in town that also participate in facilities, I know, um, Selecton Leary has been appointed to facilities. Uh, and I also, I actually nominated and invited Mrs. Douglas at the last budget committee meeting to join facilities as well. She declined, at least temporarily, until we organize and figure out dates, times and what works, yeah.
So my, my concern is that we might get more people if the time is three thirty, right, if the time was later. You might get more people cuz you had asked for people who were into trades and stuff like that, so the concern of having the administrators. Come back for a later meeting can be resolved by having them remote in for those sessions.
Yeah, and I'm.
Right, but it's still, but it is still, I, I guess the, you know, the only consideration is, we have them working many nights, like late. And so the, just the idea was like, okay, like if, unless, I mean, if it is absolutely imperative, but also we, if we do this in a two-pronged setup, right? Where we can find a way to have a secondary, like evening group, if there's that much, uh, cuz again, if there's that, if there's twenty people, I think that that's a big committee.
But I think you, there are people who didn't respond because it's three thirty in the afternoon.
Wait, so what we, the survey specifically said that it currently meets at this time, but these times may change as it moves forward to include evening hours.
And asks what's the earliest.
Asked what the earliest people could meet and provided another option, and nobody put past seven and. Most people actually put three thirty or four as their available time, so. The goal wasn't to limit it just to the people who can attend in the afternoon, but to really sort of open the door and say, hey, if you have time that you wanna give to this. Topic, we wanna hear from you and we will find a way to make sure your voice is included. In whatever way that may be, and again, I kinda leave that to Andrew and, um, Matt to kinda.
All right, so Mr. Schumaker and I will, will connect and sync up, but I think right now we stand with our meeting for next week, we'll get a, we'll get a notification out. And I'm glad to send this as well to the respondents, just alerting them to next week's meeting, and we'll go from there.
Can you review, uh, so you're not in the invite, Andrew, but I can send it to you, um, the rest of the invitees. So I just wanted, I mean, we have on here Kyle Barker, um, David Ealy, um, and, you know. So just tell me who exactly you want on that invite?
I think we only need.
Town people.
I think, yeah, I don't think we need any of our, like, consultants at this next meeting.
Correct.
I would say keep the administrators, teachers, um, Mr. Blannis, if you're willing to still continue.
The other piece, the other question is, we had all three principals, all three schools represented, because at the time, we were addressing needs at all three schools. You know, Principal Hess has been not needed at a lot of the meetings cuz our focus has been LMS and GMS. And I think the focus now is GMS, so again, just tell me exactly who you want there.
But I think some of the options being talked about would impact high school students, and so I still think it's important, maybe not for this first meeting, and this sounds more organizational. But I think it's important to have the input, sorry Jake, I know you're cringing in the back, to have all three.
Trying to get you out of it, Jake.
I know, I appreciate that. You can also get the download, right, and we can talk.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be full attendance, and again, I think you guys will be flexible with remote participation and whatever it is you need to do. And, and these meetings are recorded, which offers that as an option as well, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I also think for the community's benefit, like, a lot of the community had questions about different, I mean, we've, we've seen every question that's sung at this point, but. I think at least for this next one, that we can, we can feel out moving forward if there's meetings that they don't all have to attend or not, which I think is probably the case, but.
All right, do you guys feel like you have enough direction at least to be able to move forward with a meeting and then we can?
Yep.
Make sure it's.
Thank you.
On the next agenda, all right, the school board twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar.
We just did that, didn't we?
Nope, we did the school calendar, and then we did the budget committee calendar, and now our school board meeting calendar.
School board, oh.
I motioned to cut our meetings in half.
Both in, in duration and frequency.
Yeah. Uh, nice try, so again, I think the board can look and see this, for the most part, aligns with what we've done in past years with the first and third Wednesday. I will note that it is part of a discussion, we did take the planned school board community forums off. Uh, having them planned doesn't feel like it's worked as well, and then I think we might wanna have them, but just more organically and issue-focused. As the need arises, rather than a pre-planned.
And then try to come up with an idea.
Yeah, and then, yeah, yeah, exactly, so, I mean, if the board feels strongly, we can put it back on, but the thought was, it just. Wasn't working in terms of pre-planning a year in advance for those, um.
No, but thinking about our discussions and what potentially March of twenty twenty-five might look like for warrants, we may consider a forum in the November timeframe. And I know November's packed with a lot of other meetings, December as well, but that's really the time where we'd want to, to have those conversations.
Sure. Yeah, and I think we can, like I said, organically say in September, hey, I'd like to have one in November, and here's what it's gonna be on, and we can start to work and, and set that up. But I think the, the intent was good, but I just, in terms of actual, actually doing it, it just didn't work out as well as we'd hoped, um, for that. Um, any other questions on these dates and whatnot? Uh, you usually have a conversation about the summer, um, so we do only have one meeting in July. Um, last year, we went with the, I believe it was the second Tuesday, that's still, our second Wednesday, rather, that's still proposed here. I don't know if anyone knows of any pre-planned weeks that would, you'd prefer to have it either be, I definitely would say no to the third. But either the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth.
I'm out for twenty, the seventeenth.
Do we get that, that's an off week for us too, can we, is our, is the room available on the second week?
We plan ahead, it usually is.
My, my preference, well, I can see value in having the meeting on the tenth, especially with our new superintendent coming in.
Yep.
Um, I know that I won't be here for that meeting.
Okay.
So just.
I mean, seventeenth is fine.
So you know, we'll be here for that.
I'd, I'd actually say the tenth or the twenty-fourth, right, but again, sensitive to a new super, and what support do we need to provide as a board? Like, does it make sense to keep it on the tenth, probably?
Okay.
Probably, yeah. And again, we can always change it as we get closer and, and whatnot, but the thought process, you know, as we all look at our summer vacations and whatnot. Hopefully this kind of aligns so that we have as much participation as possible, especially those August meetings. They get crammed with a lot of the school starting topics and whatnot and preparations.
All right, well, I think it's good for now and we'll just keep it flexible, right?
Yep.
I'm making a motion to approve this twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school board meeting calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, questions?
Just, so I'm clean, so September tenth, I have to move that, um, voting day up, it's incorrect on here. I just picked that up, and I changed, as you were talking, uh, January second and third to match the other calendar we just approved, so. I'm just syncing everything up to make sure that what you're approving matches.
Okay. Yep, works. All right, seeing no other questions, all in favor?
I'm sorry, as I did that.
Just kidding.
You left the tenth, right?
Yes.
You didn't, we didn't change.
I heard ten seventeen, twenty-four, ten, got it, okay.
We went back to ten.
Okay, so I thought. Pardon?
The, the budget meetings on this draft still jive with.
They still include the one on the fourteenth.
And one on the twenty-first.
Correct.
And the, uh, possible deliveratives are the eighth and fifteenth, so that.
But frankly, I'd like to leave that yellow on there for the fourteenth, because that could be an opportunity for us to add another board meeting.
Yep.
To review items and, you know, when I hand this to my assistant and she puts them all on my calendar, I want her to block that one, so. Um, cool, 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 all right, so we think we didn't quite vote, so we had a motion in the second, we started to, we stopped, we started to, we stopped. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, all right, that passes five zero zero. We're cruising, board member contacts. Um, I think you had. Renee put these together, is if everyone can take a peek and make sure information is accurate, just so we're able to.
Bunch of people commented, I think she caught everything that came her way, so if there's any, and this is not a public document, just to be clear with the board. Um, cuz it does have home information, but this is an internal document that we use.
I don't know if these commit, I don't know if all these committees are, cuz I think I'm on grading and reporting, I don't think I'm still on curriculum, am I still on curriculum? I don't think so.
It's on the agenda.
On my, on my list, I have Tina and you on grading, and I have.
Just Tina on.
Just Tina on curriculum.
Tina and you on curriculum, but on the list, it has Tina, no, it has you and Peter on grading and just Tina on.
It's definitely not Peter on grading.
So that's, that's, I just noticed that this evening's.
So I think it's you two on grading and reporting, and I thought it was just Tina on.
Curriculum.
Curriculum, and I'm happy to be a backup for that as needed.
So just the, what I noticed it when I was looking through the, like, committee reports list.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cuz that tends to be what I look at.
All right, so Heidi will be my, um, sidekick for curriculum.
Curriculum, it's, it's Heidi as a backup?
Yep.
Oh, you just have that.
So on this contact sheet, they have me on curriculum, but I'm on grading and reporting, which is not on there. And then it's got emergency committee and emergency management, which I think are the same thing. And I think that's the rest of my stuff, and I'm not on SIP, I don't think either.
It is.
Backup for SIP.
Am I the backup for SIP?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, um, this is accessible to the board, I would say make comments for any changes that you wanna see on here.
Can I just give you editing?
Yeah, that's even better.
I think I edited when she sent it out.
Did you?
Cuz I added myself to the SIP and.
As a, as a chair for many of those committees, can I just ask that if they're edited, somebody lets us know? Cuz I don't have editing access to them, and I feel like sometimes I'm making people off.
Yep.
If, if board members could edit this, and then we'll turn editing off in the next couple of days and reconcile.
Yep, that's fine.
We'll make this the definitive list so that. All right, thank you for that.
Okay, um, and then we get into the ethics policy and code of conduct policies, I'm just combining them to be a part of the same conversation.
Yep, so as requested at the last meeting, we prepared the code of ethics. Trying to figure out why there's a staple.
She stapled them together.
Oh, because it has the guidelines on social media?
Social media.
So there are five copies of the code of ethics here, and there's the back of it, the back of the code of ethics has the signature page. And here's the code of conduct, five copies, and the back of it has a signature page.
So I did wanna ask, if I can slide that down, in terms of the code of ethics, the third bullet, that seems to be the one that's hanging up. What if we? What if we, and I'm throwing this out there for board discussion, obviously it hasn't gone through policy or anything like that, but if we can come to an agreement without it needing to go to policy, that saves everybody some time and effort. Um, what if we put in there, um, and I'm trying to look and make sure it's not anywhere else, but, um, somehow says that we will, um, abide by our policies, basically. Because we have a superintendent board relations policy anyway, so if we just literally, I mean, I'm fine to say, you know, we'll comply with BED or BDD or whatever it is, but I'm also fine to leave it more generic to say that our, our board, by being on, by being board members, we're going to comply with our own policies. So I, I can see it generically or I can see it, whatever, but then that way we are complying with, we're all, we're doing that. And, um, I think we might even all be able to sign the same version if we are in agreement on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So remove point three and just include that we will abide by our school district policies or that we.
Follow, I don't know what the word people wanna use, follow.
Adhere.
Adhere to.
Oh, I like adhere. Adheres nice, sticky. He just pulled that one right out, um.
Hundred thousand dollars can get you that word.
Okay. Nobody got that kind of.
I, I think that's fine and thanks for your consideration with that, um, so strike bullet three, add in a sentence at the end that will.
We just change, we can just change.
Or we just change, or we're just rewording bullet three.
I was just gonna reword bullet three to say, um, adhere to all board policies.
Adopted board policies.
Sure. Thanks lawyer Matt.
No problem lawyer Heidi.
Um.
That's right.
Were there any other concerns on anything else?
She's a board talk.
Is everyone good with the school board of conduct policy?
Yeah, the use of social media and ways of conduct.
Hmm?
I only got two.
Is it social?
Social media is attached.
Yep, I got the code of ethics.
Oh, I'm sorry, it got held up over here because I didn't pass them down.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Alright, any changes to that? So I think we should vote on this change, so I guess I'm, um, making a motion to, um, change the code of ethics policy BCA to strike, um, the third bullet point down and to add language that says, and change it to adhere to all adopted board policies. Is there a second for that change? There's a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright, and so what I will do with that, does anyone have one they didn't write on or that they wrote on more clearly than I did?
I write like a doctor, so.
Yeah.
Let's use Matt's, Matt's looks good. Alright, so I'm in a.
But I signed it. I initialed it.
Well, that's fine, they can use Tina's first writings even neither.
Okay, go on with Tina's.
Oh, he initialed too?
Yeah, he did, sure. Alright, so we, we can do this at the end, but is everyone comfortable signing these three documents now? It'll be the social media policy guidelines, the code of ethics as amended and the school board of conduct, which is not amended.
Yes.
Alright, beginning that, we will make sure before everybody leaves today, we will grab those signatures, but I don't wanna keep this meeting going while we figure it all out. And then I wrote down on my agenda, we added a couple of things here, we added the election of officers for under old business. So.
So I would like to once again nominate Andrew as chair. Given, um, basically everything I said at the last meeting and, you know, I think we're in a critical point. I think Andrew's got the temperament, uh, and the knowledge of both what goes on here at the school and with the budget committee to move us forward.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second, I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
So, part of my job is to, again, advise the board. You just signed a policy adhering to all policies or, signed a policy adhering to all policies. If you take a look at policy BDB, you're gonna need to waive that, in my opinion, because it clearly says that you do this at the annual meeting. You're not doing it at the annual meeting, so you wanna just be cognizant of that. Um, and then one other comment that's gotten to my ears, I don't know how truthful it is, but people said, well, if we're not happy with whatever the outcome is, we can just elect again, we can have another vote later. And it's really nothing in policy that talks about that either, so just going into this eyes fully open, you wanna make sure that you waive BDB. So you're not against your policy that says shall be elected at the annual meeting, cause this is not it.
So the, so from the second comment that you made on that, I think that it's insane that we don't have a policy that if we had a rogue chair that was just going off the rails, that we have no mechanism as a, or no policy mechanism as a board to be able to take a majority vote to remove a chair. I don't know that it's ever come to that for our town, um, or that it would, but I mean, we absolutely should be bringing that policy forward, I would think, I mean.
I guess I read policy BDB a little bit differently. Um, this is the policy that was handed out at our last meeting, right? So the last sentence of the first paragraph says officers will remain in their respective offices until new successors are elected. Well, that election can happen at any time. I don't read that that says election has to be during the first organizational meeting.
I, I mean, it's the rule of the board, how you wanna interpret that. I'm, I read the second sentence and what I've always been taught is the word shall has real specific direction to it and it says shall be elected at the annual organization meeting, right? So that's the one that we open, the superintendent opens, that's the whole, and that's not what we're doing, this, I'm just pointing that out, so again.
Well, I, I mean, I agree, well, it doesn't hurt us to, to make a motion to waive it, yeah.
I'll make a motion to waive the policy BDB.
Okay. Yeah, we already have a motion in a second pending, so I'm just trying to figure out how we.
Withdraw the motion.
Withdraw your first motion.
Okay, I withdraw the first motion.
You got a second?
You withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw the second, yeah.
Okay.
Now you can do your.
Policy.
I make a motion to, uh.
Waive.
Waive policy BDB.
Second.
Motion in a second?
Waiving it just for tonight?
For tonight.
Uh, for tonight, yeah.
Motion to waive for tonight, questions or comments? You're not all.
Man, I think, I, sorry, I think that's fine. Again, I think the first paragraph, I, I, I'm just, I'm, I am reading this differently than what's explained. But if there's gray legal area with shall, you know.
Well, we can revisit the, we can.
Yeah, I think, I think it should go back to the policy committee for re, re-review.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero, so that policy is waived for tonight. Now we go back. Your turn again.
Oh, I nominate Mr. Cutter as chair.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion.
So I guess my question would be, uh, we've, we've gone around the block on this a little bit. Um, and the biggest, you know, concern that I had, um, Andrew, that I just wanna make sure of is, we gotta feel for what Heidi's time obligation has been. Um, you know, Heidi works for herself, so like she's been able to dedicate time during, during the day. I just wanna make sure that if we move forward with you as chair, um, and, you know, I don't know who will be vice chair, but hypothetically, if it was Heidi, um, I just wanna make sure that we're not doing something where we're saying to someone like, hey, we're gonna rename a chair, but we're gonna pu- push all of the work off to the vice chair. And so we're just like doing this entitled, like I wanna make sure that like what we're doing is equitable across the board. So I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that.
Has to be, right? I mean, I think that it has to be a divide and conquer approach on this board. We have a lot to accomplish, we have a lot of committees. Heidi, you put in a tremendous amount of time, there's no question about that. I think, Matt, to your point, like time commitment, five to seven hundred hours, if that's true, right? That certainly is a concern for my, for myself, no doubt about it, but I would need, I would need support of the vice chair, whoever that is, to help divide and conquer some of those tasks and activities, right? I think that has to be the model, if that's the commitment and if that's the ask of the chair, right? Especially because I'm also taking on budget committee and facilities, right? And that, that's a lot to ask of any one person. So in terms of dividing and conquering, fully supportive of that. We would just need to be open and collaborative and I think we have pretty good relationships on this board. I think we do, um, strive to work together as best as we humanly can. Of course, we have differences of opinions, but that leads to, I think, in my, I believe that really leads to healthy debate in some cases. Um, and I would expect no different.
So, um, you know, I know we have to nominate vice chairs separately, but I think that it really is a pertinent conversation to like, to tie into this because.
And I would fully support Heidi as vice chair.
Well, but also I think that, like, there's a component of what we have coming up with a new superintendent, stuff like that, that Heidi has a, a lot more direct experience with. So the, the question is, like, is that something that you'd even be open to?
Me?
You do.
Um, I've thought about this, it's been a difficult couple of weeks, to be perfectly honest, because again, I hate seeing division amongst our board. I am fine with disagreement, I don't like division and that's, I frankly, I'm embarrassed about our last school board meeting on this topic because I know we're all better than this, we are, we are so much better than this, um. So I thought about it long and hard, um, I, as I have said all along and my, my position hasn't changed, I'm in this for the kids, I'm in this for the students, I'm in this for the staff. And if my presence will be helpful as a vice chair, um, for making this move forward and being there for the kids and the staff and, and whatnot, I, I am open to being vice chair. I would wanna have very clear conversations about what that's gonna look like, what you're gonna need from me. Um, but you and I have, I think, have had those conver, we're capable of those conversations, um. Uh, so I, it would be something I would consider, you know, again, I, what I want more than anything is for us to be a well-rounded board that puts the needs of our students first and foremost. And so that's what I'm looking for.
That's fantastic. I mean, that's, that's, and I think that the rest of us too, you know, would, would all be willing to.
Yeah, and I'm definitely not saying you're not willing to do it, I just, that's for me is.
All those untitled people would be happy to, would be happy to, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of heavy lift with new superintendent and all that stuff, so I think we, uh, we definitely have to work together, so.
Yep.
Okay. I'll call the vote then.
Calling vote, all those in favor of, uh, approving Andrew as our school board chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? It passes four one zero.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Heidi as the vice chair.
Second.
Beat me to it.
Thank you.
Yep, looking forward to continuing the good collaborative work that we've had for the past couple of years.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you've done an exceptional amount of work. I don't think people really understand the amount of work that you do.
And that is absolutely okay, I certainly not looking for props in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, but it's. No, but it's, uh, you know, you've done an exceptional amount of work. I, I don't know how you actually manage it, but I
Not at all.
Very appreciative of the, uh, of, of what you bring to the table and, and especially now, your, your willingness to.
I also think it's imperative to have some stability among the board and Heidi has the experience necessary for an incoming superintendent. She's done negotiations, she's done, you know, we've gone through personnel issues, we've gone through, um, parent issues. So I think having that experience is critical to having a successful board.
Looking forward. Thank you. Um, technically, I'm not chair anymore, so Andrew.
I'll defer my rights to you for the rest of the evening.
I am perfect, okay, I'll finish it out.
We're almost there.
One more agenda item. No, 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 I, I was gonna say, all in favor, I, I, it's not my job anymore though, so that's.
Well, after we vote, then it's not.
Okay, um, there's a motion in the second, all in favor for Heidi, me, as vice chair, please say aye.
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 Opposed? I'm gonna abstain from that, so it passes, um, for zero one.
Awesome. I'm glad that's.
Let's kick some butt, people, we can do this.
Great.
Alright.
We can sign next, we all know where to, where to sign us, right?
Andrew, you wanna move us along or you want me to finish it up or you?
I mean, next up on the agenda is manifest, um, do we have three signatures on the manifest this evening?
We do.
School board comments too.
I wrote over that.
Yeah, so did I.
Where's this, who's this going to, this way?
I had three signatures go that way. Next up on the agenda is school board comments.
Any comments?
Commented enough.
No, I just.
Congratulations to the chair and vice chair.
Yeah, I just wanna say I think this, you know, hopefully will be a good collaborative start, um, I want nothing more than the success of Litchfield School District.
We all agree. Uh, the next agenda item is community input, so we will open up, uh, to community input. This is, um, any, any type of input to the board, um, on, on any en, agenda item or not this evening.
No.
Please.
Oh, the.
State your name and address, please.
Thanks. Nice to see some smiles. I caught, uh, a lot of last, the last meeting, uh, on, on the web and I gotta say, you guys looked miserable. I'm glad to see, uh, you come.
Embarrassing was my word, but miserable is a nice word too.
Okay, um, a couple of things, I think, um, they might dovetail or even overlap with some of the things you've already talked about. My name is Mike Anaszkovich, Twenty Century Lane. Um, on the school vote, the up or down vote, um, obviously it failed. And it got me to thinking, okay, um, the people who are yes are probably always going to be yes. The people who are no are going to be probably two, two groups, no under any circumstances. But there, I'm sure there are people who voted no who could get to yes based on certain circumstances or, or what have you. Um, I'm going on the assumption that this, uh, board and any other boards involved with, with the new school planning has done their due diligence and has come to the conclusion that, you know, we've, we've exhausted all the options, we need a new GMS. I'm just going on that assumption, um, because we obviously have the community's feedback now and if they're not paying attention now, well, then that's on them. Alright, so if they don't get involved from, uh, from this point forward, um, there's not much we can do. What I'm really interested in, uh, is finding out for those, those who voted no, what could get you to yes? Is there anything that could get you to yes and get us over this hump? Now, I don't know how to do that, you talked about survey for, for facilities, um, but I'm sure there's a way, um, to, to reach these people and to take that data and have it be an input to the board. Um, so anyway, I don't know if you've thought about that, um.
Oh, yeah.
Just every day for the last two weeks. It's like, well.
I dream about it, I.
Oh, no, I mean, like, how, are there, is there a certain percentage of the no votes that could be swung and what would swing them? So do we know?
The lower dollar amount comes to mind.
Yeah.
Certainly, but at some point, you know, we're going to have to, Fisher cut bait, right? So if, if the answer is, we need a new school, it got voted down this time, it's not gonna go away, it's going to have to happen at some point. That's making an assumption unless something massive changes. How do we get, how do we find out, are there, are there things that can change in terms of the approach, in terms of what the planning is? And I understand that the original plan was just a, a, you know, kind of back of the envelope, uh, assessment, uh, and so forth. Um, so anyway, that was, that was kind of one of the thoughts that I had and I don't, I don't know if we have, um, you know, in terms of plan B now, right? So, so setting that aside, in terms of plan B, assuming we're not gonna get a new school for a while, right? What are the things, do you have a list of things that are critical criteria that fed into the need for a new school? And if so, are they prioritized and can we maybe in the interim knock some of these off in the, in the meantime, right? So kind of solve some of the biggest issues, whether they're health related, whether they're safety related. I don't know if you've got a list of, of those, but that, but are they, and again, are they prioritized? Can we go forward with a, with a, an approach that starts to pick them off, you know, without having to, to like bite the whole bullet at once? That was just one of my thoughts, so anyway.
It's a great thought. Are you planning on joining the facilities committee?
Yeah, I didn't see your name on that survey, so.
Well, I'd love to, I mean, again, I don't have any construction.
No, it's not, that's not just for construction experience.
Experience, so, yeah, I, I'm happy, happy to help out there, so, you know, write me, write me down.
I'll send you an email with the form right now.
On the last meeting, uh, code of ethics, great. I'm glad you guys have gotten over that, cause that was one of my things, I kind of agreed with you, uh, Mr. Cutter. Uh, it didn't really belong in ethics, ethics is really more about behavior, right? Uh, it didn't really belong in ethics, ethics is really more about behavior, right, um, so glad you guys have kind of put that uh, behind you. The issue of changing the uh, the, the board, right, the, the membership of the board here. And um, based on what I heard from last week's meeting, or the last meeting, there was some, um, there were some issues from the select board. About wanting to work with the chair here, alright, and I didn't get a clear info, uh, a clear uh, idea from listening to that discussion. As to what their concern was, so if there seemed to be some back, there was some assumptions that there was some back channel stuff going on. That it wasn't really clear what their problem was, so I'm just asking, you know, do, do you need a, a facilitator? Do you need someone to kind of help out with that, right, because as uh, Mr. Jetty said. Um, and we're seeing it in Congress right now, with, with, with the, you know, uh, the speaker of the house, right, what's to prevent this from happening again? So, do you need someone to kind of go in between and say, alright, look, what, what is your problem? Let's get it written down, you know, let's see if we can have a discussion and solve it, rather than.
Mediation.
I don't, I don't know, is it personality, is it someone just being petulant, I mean, who knows, right? Um, but it sounds like you need some kind of moderator here, because you don't wanna be going through this again, I mean, you don't need this kind of upheaval. So.
That's for sure, no, it's a good point.
So, just, just my, my suggestion, um. I hate to see this happen again, you know, we don't need, we don't need this kind of behavior, we need all the, all the, the groups to work together, obviously. So, anyway, that, that was, those are just some of the things that, that stuck out to me after la, the last meeting, and I just wanted to, to raise that. I'm not looking for answers, probably some, most of the stuff you've probably already discussed, but uh, just really more reinforcing from. From my position, that's just a single data point, uh, in, in the public sphere, so, um. The Alveron meeting, I don't, I don't think that has anything to do with GMS, does it?
Peripherally, I mean.
Okay, okay, because there was, you know, there's a lot of conversation on, on the, the town page about this, and I'm like, okay. Um, it, it seems completely innocent to me, like, uh, like, let's, let's, let's stop with conspiracy, uh, mongering. Um, and um, it, what is the problem, is there a particular problem statement that we have? That, that required the need for this discussion, like what are we trying to solve, so that would be something I would wanna keep in mind as well, so. I know I've gone over my five minutes, but appreciate you listening.
We appreciate your input, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, okay, thanks, I hope you guys uh, get home before.
They, they don't come in.
Gave him the night off with the weather.
We have all the signatures, but Andrew's on this, so.
Perfect, alright. With that, that wraps up uh, community input this evening, and the board will move into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one A three. Um, this is specifically regarding the dismissal promotion compensation of any public employee. Uh, I think, believe, we, we are going specifically into non-public for B and C, correct? And that is the hiring of any person as a public employee, as well as matters which discuss in public. Would likely adverse affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public, please.
So moved.
Second.
Have a good night, drive safe.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero zero, we are now in non-public, thank you very much all, have a great evening.